Guidelines have been put in place for governing bodies to follow. Governing bodies need to be willing to business of the city within serving as a COVID-19 team. There are some adjustments we have to make in order to conduct the meeting. Then we have to limit the number of people we're in, but can social distancing will be practiced. Since this is a special meeting, the agenda is set and cannot be altered. Public comment is limited to the agenda I'm holding. We have Zoom set up, the public participate will call upon. Please be aware and be heard by everyone both at home and at home. We ask everyone to be respectful of others and patient with us if we are in uncharted territory. When acknowledged, just state your name and address for the record. We also have an option for you to email comments through the live branches before public comments. If you can hear the council meeting through the city's website. For the council, we will need to announce the council members' names. Speaking each time, if there is action taken, we can announce who made the motion for two seconds. And then when who voted. I'm going to read through the agenda. My name is Brian.
This is Susan and I'm Sarah.
We'll move to second. Court. Aye. Susan?
Aye.
Brian? Yes. Scott? Aye.
Julie?
Aye. I think you can ask for public comments on the items and now I'm responding. I think that's how Lynn is set up as well.
Okay. So do this COVID-19 open city. It's not needed on our response.
Yeah, yes. All right. As you probably already know, we are under a stay at home order for the county. We will be reporting so it will. Farther than that, though, we already take an action for the last first two weeks. So that order doesn't really affect us too much. I know it affects a lot of people outside in the public, though. But now what we're doing, we've done for about two weeks, is that all city buildings are not taking any more people walking into traffic. Whether it's City Hall, Public Works building, or even the police department. We are still there from eight to five in the morning business hours. And we are doing normal business as best we can, which people are using the drop box to pay the bills. They're paying them off fine. They're calling, of course, for police assistance at the either part. Police units are still out there, particularly one person units to begin with. So we don't have a lot of people usually interacting in close quarters in our police department anyway. So it really doesn't change their operations too much. But we are not taking people walking into any of the buildings because of the exposure or the risk of contacting this through the public. So those are our processes we're taking. We've gone to other departments like the Public Works. They're not going to work Monday through Thursday during 10-hour days. So then they're basically going to have to bond on Fridays. So there's like four days to have to grab a team and come work. So but we will have our two departments up at Public Works managing the desk on desktop on Fridays for now. So a lot of our folks have been split up. They tend to work in small groups anyway. Exposure, risk of contacting this. So those are our processes we're taking. We've gone to other departments like Public Works. So those three people have been split up that way. And the other Public Works, whatever will be recorded, we've got two people with a wastewater treatment. And we need people at wastewater treatment basically for our times. They're taking out the cautionary measures even above the on, but you don't know if the virus can live in or not. The wastewater process, showing on months now that virus. So we're trying not to turn any contact with any. Once we're doing the things everything else is doing, I have all the wipe downs, all the cements. We have breaks and they're coming back to chocolate break. My dad bought a couple candles for him. They're coming off now. They have a clean place. Basically, we're kind of getting people to take breaks after working at the bars and very big breaks outside. One thing that will be changed, though, is for sessions, getting a lot of the national inspections, municipal inspections. And one of our inspections gets up yesterday. So somebody has a water heater or something like that, they can still get those. We can find where they work in the home. We're just trying to be as inspect and solid. That's a little too much here in this case. So we'll catch up later to do those inspections. So we're not going to do that so easy. But really, everything else that we do is as we were doing. We set up all our workers who need to work on home. Our IT guy that set them up, which is fairly easy for them to do. So if you do have to work from home, your childcare is required. If you test positive for the virus, they can also work at home if you're under corporate or something like that. So we're working on the front end of the stage. But otherwise, the current big goal right now is to use the public about what we're doing. We're getting some information out there. There's something out of the county every day. We've got an update two minutes before announcing that public health is putting out a lot of information. I'm on two or three GVs, which I'm very busy looking at. That's all I do now is keep it moving because nobody can be in person usually. And it's barely user-friendly and efficient anyway. So but frankly, that's about 24 hours a day. So if I fear not to be constant in something else, well, it's because I can. I'm crying, but I can. We're just living in 24 hours, 24/7 right now, as we should be. I mean, it's a serious public health issue and Duncan's kind of been helping out a lot. Like I said, we've been collaborating with Congress and some other folks here in town. We've got a lot of information about what's open, what isn't, what's available, what is it right now. And I'm not going to repeat a lot of stuff that the county is putting out right now. It seems to change a lot and I'm just fairly keeping up with the conversation. And so there's a lot of information, half the county website and half the social media right now. So we're trying to communicate as best we can through social media and website and all the people we've got right now. And plus, the council meeting is kind of a good test for us to leave the fact knowledge here on Facebook. And Zoom and other things we haven't done before. So we've got our orders before. And something else. I'm crying, but yeah. All are operating with the general Congress and some other folks here in town. We have a lot of information about that's a little bit of business. We're just gathering some information right now. I'm not going to repeat a lot of stuff that the county is putting out right now. So we have a lot of information, half the county website and half the social media right now. So we're trying to communicate as best we can through social media or website and all the people right now. And plus, the council meeting is a test for us. The air. Warren has stepped up and done a great job of managing their people and explaining what we're doing, why we're doing it. So for us, also. Disaster preparedness stuff that we've been trying to do inside, you might all know that. So here it is. And we've also been talking pretty much a lot of the time. Operation, everybody has that all been doing together. Yeah, we're just starting. I think that's the thing. Keep in mind is we're just starting this process. It's going to be a long haul. Appreciate hearing, getting to know and keep this up and on. I think that's great. And obviously, the way the process, I know it's related to this topic, but obviously, initially, different topics. So this is unprecedented in time. We've never seen it live in it. Certainly is an emergency. We don't even know how bad it's going to get yet. I just didn't know if there's an appetite for the council in there to think about what we can do as a entity. You know, it's budget planning season. You know, we're kind of asking further down for us to be understood better. But be thinking about what we could do as a body to try to positively impact citizens and businesses. But we know that's going to be some significant impact. And just nervous thinking about it, but we really don't know what our ability to create that is. But I would be open to having, in the gym, that we discuss possibilities.
I think when I discussed that. We're trying to get through the focus. We have started kind of talked about that a little bit. I'd love to see some sort of unit.
Yeah, let's figure out where to practice, practice, make sure operations. Well, that's going to impact your people. Keep that running. But to do this, how are citizens going to have issues if they lose their job? Or if energy, how everybody works here, it's going to be on the board. They have problems meeting their monthly budgets and what can we do as a city? Help them through that and at the same time, which is something that we also talk about. You know, so I don't have the answers, but I'd love to do something, figure out what we can do. And all comes down to, I didn't kind of focus, but really, the night of my head, because that's really what we're going to do.
And what's probably getting before the government over.
Exactly. I'd just like to put that out there to see if we can maybe work in session to have those discussions. Because we really need to see what leverage we have to possibly do it. We may find out it's not much, but those are the conversations we need to have. Well, right now, I can tell you that, yeah, people did the suspended late payments and shut offs. So people won't have to fear that among all the other entities. Again, at the county level, there is a task force. Task force, it'd be once a week, I think they have another conference call tomorrow. And there will be all the federal assistance that's coming out, SBA loans, it's extending unemployment. Yeah, all that's moving very fast because US Congress is talking and I think they've afforded so far. That will be targeted for small business and unemployment and things like that. I'm not sure, you know, I think there's another thing on Congress tour right now that they're landing over. So to get the information out to the people right now based on that. And then seeing what we can do at the county and the city about the system of business and their problems struggling. One of the things you can do immediately is, you know, if you want to switch over to business, right? Get out there and, yeah, don't, you know, restaurants are still open when they're ready to pay grants. So it's the restaurants and wherever to keep those businesses. Because they're still open. A lot of people, I realize that there was a change in the package. Liquor, alcohol, ABC is loud. Even bars who sell, you know, liquor on a lot of side clothes that they can drive up and back. So they're trying to get them rules and kind of do anything that's safe. Will be enough. No, I think, I mean, it won't be layoffs and we'll be, this is the problem. And so the simple things right now for us is it's paper not with it. If you can, if you can go, whatever. And I mean, you do know people who are isolated and are struggling, whatever. I'd probably reach out to people in that situation. Because that is, you put a lot of, you know, stress on a lot of people. So I think that'll be a major goal for. I think we can all right think, but appreciate the immediate reaction. Those are absolutely essential. And then as we get this information flow, hopefully, we can get that as it comes in. I don't know how you share that, but federal, state, county. And then, you know, ideally, there's nothing left for us to do because it's all taken care of. I'm doubtful if that's going to be the case. So just in my head, we're sitting on reserve that I've been told are for emergencies. We can talk about what those really are, but we have the ability to handle emergencies. And we have the ability, what we have, to handle it in a maybe a way that does not speak, you know, buying equipment or revealing something. So just thinking in my head about that reserve fund and what it's there for. Because it's not a time to try and use it if we at all have a possibility.
Loans to small businesses.
I don't know what the outcome is. We might not be able to do anything, but at least have thought through it and know we found how to couldn't unfeel that. And ideally, we can do something. And I feel even that, so we'll only have this conversation. I don't see us moving faster than the state and the federal noise. We're probably going to be behind that curve and adjust accordingly. Our tendency is to do something, you know, and we're in a position right now of the unknown and we're reactive. And so we do that on the state, county, kind of trickle down to us and then act as you learn. So we kind of in that loop, okay, right here.
No, the comments are all about audio. It wasn't loud enough, but seriously, the audio is linked to this, so. I don't have anything on Zoom either.
The one comment I had is I think going forward, we'll have better direction. We have set up a Zoom account with the city.
What you're going to be all sure to do all.
I don't know. Do those iPads have cameras on?
Okay, Blake, you're caught up in the aviation, but we can't do your perspective.
You can't. Like, you cannot go into your technical set and go, oh, city attorney, so. That's it. Or legal matter. So if you want to talk about, probably on the, the VIVO and the, yeah, that was okay. Yeah, I just want to talk about that. You know, we did think about making an offer to purchase Allen Park. I know with my, there to talk with, slide boy representing, you know, a historical, and I believe he's here tonight. So he had a question to ask. He was asking for 10,000 more and we were offering mainly because of the lack of income. They didn't receive all their rent from 2019 and wouldn't receive that from 2021. So that's all we have. Figure sheet that, that left it back, because that's all that we have. Forty of them. So we bring it back to the council. So, okay, whether it is a question for one or whatever. You know, but they aren't certainly open to the idea of some part.
I guess my question from the council is, will the, one of the four, Tennessee or? Maybe I'm going to, because we haven't, Lynn has a talk. What's, what's our next step? Well, let's talk about how hard for a second. So how many, how many boxes have you moved outside of property? Like a void, five day team, season only for a try. But I'm lost. I'm not sure. I don't know how to answer that at the time. There is a wrong way to take that shape. I think it was basically five blocks. Well, because if there's a number in mine, I want to know how much for a lot. I don't know where you're going. Are you going to throw it out? Because cool, you know, I hope like that is like. I like that. There's also a compound of passwords that happens, whatever that happens. It's not, it's not like it's a quarter pound.
I agree. From a negotiating, fairly, it's right like that. I would like to have further conversation about that once this gets resolved, you know, like it does. Talking about it, assuming it will, it would change, you know, what we do is depending on where we end up. If it's ending, it doesn't happen. But there's several scenarios you got to find. What we do is. Success will be the Santa Fe negotiations, but that will be on with the minimum that changes.
So I'm saying you can make that, you can make that contract if you can do it off.
Ryan, if you need to stop the point that you need authorization. You're correct, because we've given them an offer and they came back with a calendar that's close, but it's not like the rest. Discussion, whatever else to discuss. Or some, what was the nature of that discussion? I guess, what it looked like that if we are. The high level relationship between entities as opposed to a financial. Or I don't have a hurry. I'm not the type to do that. You understand? Okay, I have a question about, hey, if this happens, will you be the world standard in the great city? But I'm not, I don't know what it's time to do. I think as a negotiator, we need to kind of set the guidelines of what those terms are so we can. Trying to say what these. I think last time we talked about this, somewhere in, I have a community myself, but also members that would need to do that. Everything when I move forward on the park and we report with negotiators, with, with, like, four, we go parking. All everything's about. That's, that was mine. So that's where, that's where the actual, the next one is. Correct. Yeah, that's, that's, you know, that's what I was talking about. I know with my. I think I get that. So I'm not sure what this negotiation that Lynn admitted is. And what person.
Well, he hasn't had any time. No, I'm going to, yeah, I'm saying, I mean, they're kind of in the comfort.
Got you. Okay. So to share is that, okay, I'm going to do that. I'm going to do that outside. I'm going to do that. So if you go have that conversation about this, you know.
This is what we're thinking here. How are we going to?
Well, I was way down the road from where that was.
Daughter, you good? I think, do you have anything else that you want to say to the council? She has questions for me.
So I do. And so the eviction is going to lift, correct? The eviction notice, we are not pursuing it at this point. Okay, assuming that. Okay, and it's right now from the governor, we have May 1st, whole line of interventions because it's standard. Right. Okay, so then get fined.
But never know it.
For 2019 and also for the lack of rent that we think 2001.
So if we're going to, if we're going to that, then we have to stand up, then we have to go back and cut it. You think that?
Well, then be up for them. I mean, that's, that's the response we gave. So if they, if you don't agree to that, then it's completely up for them how they want to receive. The other end of that's up for them.
I think that's what is, all these discussions happen. Again, I think it was, you know, in the beginning stages with me and. Conversation with Senator Gray or whether or not. Conversation with Santa Fe, or where they are, so. Yeah, so we can see, of what, how many, you know.
There, there needs to be more conversation.
Again, going into some comfortable doubt, there's always a problem down there. Don't have any.
For you, and that, don't want to talk now.
Any more questions, Roger? Thank you, Roger. Again. And then watch it online.
Uh, it's on by five minutes ago, and they started moving at the same time, so, uh, A J Stephen six thirteen or six three, obviously, six, six, zero, three, six. Uh, last I heard, there was some discussion about, you guys went back and forth trying to figure out kind of what's next, and, you know, are we okay to do this? And, I think, Mary was talking about contingency or something, and, and, and they worry about that square, split string, kind of, probably, for that.
Yeah, um, getting the council coming, just discussed it, um, you know, they wanna go and have more discussion with Midland, and see kind of their appetite. It sounds like the finance committee wants to have that discussion along with them, um, but, as I told them, Glenn wanted to rise by the council, to have a discussion with them. So, we haven't had a step, we haven't gotten two steps into that, thanks, Roger, so that's kind of, anybody trying to manage. So, anyways, what I wanted to do, give, give, I don't know, can you, versus the council or the council, ask you any questions, but.
Sure, sure, um, first, it's off subject, but I was outside with my comment, um, earlier, I don't know who was talking about, but you were talking about supporting some local businesses. Um, I do want you guys to know that, uh, the higher fund that was established, that was five million dollars, um, that was all awarded in less than forty-eight hours. Um, we were included in Kansas City, Kansas, and Lawrence, which meant there were only fifty possible loans, for, for restaurants, hotels. I, I don't know one single local city, small business that got it, even though they applied, it was just first come, first served. I can tell you, we have some small businesses in this town, that twenty K, well, maybe not much for us alone, which can change for them. And I, from what I understand, commerce is not gonna add more money, um, I would challenge you guys as council members, and somebody has to pay your seed, without twenty thousand could be a difference for this city in the next twenty years, and get on. Uh, we've done really great our last four or five years, I'm gonna grow, and I, I would, I would, I would challenge you as a citizen, I have that, that has nothing, it's not subservient for me at all. I'm talking about some of these small businesses, like the no-ho, come like jitters, and, and the pizza, and, and all those, I mean, it'd be a shame if we lost if we worked so hard. Um, I know a lot of my, anybody's right there now. Um, as far as, on the railroad side, um, this is pretty devastating for us, and I haven't been quite about it, I guess, we missed the fact that. I, I'm not. The, the problem is, we can't sell tickets at all, and at this point, last year, we had already sold a hundred thousand dollars of order trust tickets, and right now, we can't go to conscience, even sell tickets. Uh, and so, we went into a shutdown with our near loss of revenue, uh, so this was pretty devastating for us, uh, we haven't sold a single ticket since December eleven. Um, and we burned through almost every bit of order trust money we had this year, because we were really counting on more cars coming, and so, we hired staff and everything. To be able to carry three hundred more people around, which was a massive loss for us off of order ledger ones, uh, so we spent, al- almost a half million dollars just off of order trust staff and payroll. Uh, and came out of them for not much or anything, but I do think we have a strong brand, and I think there's, there's a bright future for us as far as the Christmas tree in this area, and I think we still want to establish that. But in the meantime, I mean, we're completely just slammed, we, we, we don't know that we can make it through the shutdown, because we don't know what's gonna happen, and, and worse, it's there right now, if we knew, at least knew. I, practically, I, I can't possibly agree to sell tickets or something, we don't know, we're not hosting, we're not admitting to the cameras. Um, and, right now, what I would be doing, if we didn't have this depot issue going on, is, uh, we would probably be doing twenty, twenty-five percent off, or some kind of really great pricing, thirty percent off. Uh, regarding, I don't know, all the cars that we, we bought for C D P G's, our capacity way out already, what happened now, so, like, if you go down all the junction right now, there's a hundred sixty seats, just sitting there to car. So, and we can replace five cars for two for the same number, and shorten our cost, and we can carry a whole lot of people. The problem is, the longer this carries on, the less, the harder it is. At this point, I started getting rid of everything, trying to get me, uh, we just returned the two, uh, house houses that we had leased, uh, just because my feeling is, if that's supposed to be June or August. You know, we can't afford to drop thirty, forty thousand dollars on these payments for bathrooms, we can't do this, um, we have ten different, um, weddings that want to book under ten. In good conscience, we can't possibly allow them to book that, I mean, we're shut down, so we can't anyway, but, you know, if we were, we couldn't do that, because we're not legally, I mean, the governor's stated, any elections, but legally, we're not. Really, you're not hungry right now, and, I understand there's been a lot of tension about how this is our fault, and we did trigger this, but we're not the ones that, that, we, it became urgent when the third year, it was on his hand. Uh, before that, it wasn't, and, and the mayor and I have talked on, quite a bit about trying to get this moving forward. For us, it's just, it's been a tough situation, I feel bad for you guys, because you didn't do it. Um, and I know it's frustrating, and, all I would ask is, I mean, regardless of whether you appreciate it, or your approach or anything, um, I can tell you that regardless of personalities, I, I do think that we're all, this, this has such a, this community, both financially and historically. But I think the finance, I mean, it's important, I mean, being able to give people jobs, and, and be able to increase tax money, and, and have people visit here, I mean, I can tell you, Mickey at the nook, I mean, almost every small restaurant is set without us, they wouldn't pay. Um, and, and we want to say some of you have heard the same thing, um, if we went out of our way to go out and support, and even if it's us downtown, even though we have parking, make sure people spend money, I mean, we, we feel like we're good citizens, and, and. I would ask you, and I, I think you guys are above this, but I'm gonna say anyway, to, at least both sides might embrace a personality and just look at the quality of, of where we're going for the community, and what, what's good for the community, and I mean, you have to do that, you have to talk to the jobs and part of it. I mean, I, I can tell you, if this prolongs much more, we're not gonna make it, I mean, our burn rate right now is forty-two thousand without payroll one month, and we have no revenue coming back, I mean, that's, it's expensive on a railroad. This last year, we washed out, I, I know that it was a hot topic, and when we took that, we sold the easement to the city for three hundred fifty thousand, um, and, and some other, other things as well, but, three hundred fifty cash, we needed that to fix a washout. I don't know if you guys are aware, this last year, the whole thing washed out again, and we fixed it, and that's the five for nine. Uh, and, and I've kind of conceded, it's gonna wash out a lot, and, so we're prepared for that, but we're not trying to come and ask for stuff anymore, as, as far as that, we're trying to become self-sufficient, we're trying to become our side. Um, did any of you know that we had washed out again? I mean, we were shut off again, and, and we were able to fix it without asking anybody for anything, um, but it hurts, and we were really counting on this year, and making off for last year, we were kind of on board. And, we're excited about getting a local license, and being able to have other programming, being able to host weddings, we think it's a great venue for that, uh, and festivals and such as well, that, and we're all coming towards the town, and we're, we're really ready to wrap this up. I don't know what that offer is, um, I heard something about ten thousand more you guys asked. I don't know that it needs to take a long time, I am authority to say yes, I mean, if, if, if you guys don't care, you can just tell me, and we'll say yes, if you have an idea, if you don't have that, that's fine. I mean, our big thing is, right now, you guys have gotten an email from one of our mentors, uh, recently, and, and I had spoken with him the week prior, and he was fine. And, then he read the article in the, in the newspaper and flipped out, and said, you guys own bankrupt, I'm gonna get caught up in this, I need my money, and he lost his mind. Uh, and finally, he forwarded me the email, and said to you guys, 'cause I was like, what did you do, I don't understand, and, and he's like, just pay me, and I'm like, you're gonna get paid. And I was like, this is business, that's what it is, and we're slow paying you, I'm sorry, but, um, but, I mean, people think we're running a business, and it's been out there long enough now that, I mean, when you go to most communities, very few railroads own our own track, we do. So, when you meet an owner like that, they think the roster lives in our track, and we're not, we own our track, but, that's, that's the interpretation, because most shortline railroads have at least their track. Um, so longer this is out there with nothing to stop it, the worse it is for our rail, I mean, I don't, I don't know what else to say, but I mean, if we can be agile with this, I mean, we're, we've already offered a hundred grand, we just couldn't pay a hundred grand cash, um, to buy it, so I don't know what you guys, I don't know what they're asking for. I mean, we're, we're, we're willing to move, I mean, we're not trying to be difficult, we understand that there's, there's multiple parties that are all have high value in this community, we're not claiming that we have more than anybody else, we're not asking you guys to choose sides. But we are asking to remedy something that we think probably shouldn't have happened, um, and we're, and we're willing to, to afford something to make that equitable, I mean, we don't, we're not asking anything free. Um, I mean, even everything that we've gotten has been transactional for the most part, I mean, you guys gave us three hundred fifty thousand, you gave us utility waivers, and guaranteed that the rent would stay at one dollar, but that's transactional, you might as well have gotten a million dollars of funding, well, not with your management. It's already been a profit for the city, just all grant money for the trade-off for the sidewalk, and it's gonna continue to be, so it's already turned into a good deal, you know, so it'll help us, it was transactional, we sold something for that. And then with this most recent C D P G grant, we put a lot of work into that, and, and we're grateful that you guys stepped forward with the sponsoring organization, but it was a team effort, um, and, and we're not, still not taking any money from the city on that. I mean, that, that's state money, we're working through their, their requests for documentation and stuff, but, I mean, we're not asking for a handout, we wanna pay out these, and all that, so, I mean, is there anything, are we able to talk or not?
Any questions, or anything?
Yeah, I mean, just, I guess, more on your business side of things, so, I mean, you, you guys normally be selling discounted tickets right now, you say, I mean, is there anything wrong with, with having that contingency, like a refund on those tickets? When you get, still be selling tickets, but, you know, then, I mean, baseball tickets do that.
Here's the problem, if, if we are pretty funded on that money, then we can't, it really doesn't help us, it doesn't help us with our, our monthly.
Right, but if you can't spend it, then you sold tickets.
Yeah, but then how do we pay it back, and I get charged with that.
You don't, you don't spend it in the meantime, but, once it comes time that you actually have a green light, you got a, you got a barrel full of money, that you would have sold over the whole period of time, then you want to sell tickets.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable selling tickets, while there's hard, probably, I mean, I understand what you're asking, I just, I, I, I mean, my personal view, I don't think that that's, I, I understand what you're asking, I don't think it's good business practice. Um, and I'm not trying to do this, but I just don't think it is, and, and I, I didn't, I didn't wanna do that interview, I can show all of you, my phone, Alvin called me eight times, the only reason I talked to him was because he started giving me quotes, I'm like, holy smokes, I gotta talk to him. And, I mean, I, I literally called me eight times, I mean, and I appreciate him wanting to get the story out there, but that wasn't one that we really wanted out public like that, and I put it on the citizens page, but I never put it out in public for everybody to see. Um, I did it for our community, but I did it for our, our customers, the C F, my nuts, and people that, that we bring into town, um, I mean, to be honest, it's embarrassing for all of us. Sorry, it's, I mean, we could, in theory, I guess we could, I, I, I don't know, I'd probably wanna ask an attorney about that.
Fair, yeah. Just brainstorm here.
Yeah.
I think, you know, I agree, all that should be done, as speedily as possible, to draw all of them all, just like, so, I do think we could. Get to a yes or no, as quickly as we can, how we do that, I mean, it's just like, this is not, that's supposed to be gone, but you can't come into a decision, one way or the other, to be in the backseat, and, and, so, I, I would support it.
I, I think we all, we're all in motion, we're all in motion, we need a motion to approve that, or can we just tell them?
Which part, we have two really options here, one, one, in the first one, and the first thing, but, do you wanna ask anything first, or bring a motion? I mean, do you have to make a motion, be on, tell me what you want, to move, to negotiate?
No, I'm saying, like, what are they asking, we've already offered five.
Understand, I think that's part of our negotiating piece that, I think we need to revolve with them first. So, in my opinion, you know, it, this is a conversation, transaction between us and Santa Fe, and then, you know, you, you can work out any you want with them as well, you can't prevent that, but. I'm not comfortable sharing the negotiation we had in Santa Fe, until we understand what the counter was in the future.
Would you like, will you, will you keep what you said?
No, that's the problem, I think we were gonna have a discussion tonight, right? We're kind of stuck, like, through, or.
So, our, our offer, and this is what I told Mayor Simon, and it was before this happened, because I was trying to keep this from front of public, I said we were gonna pay a hundred thousand, uh, but then we couldn't possibly get money for that, because the value was twenty-three thousand. Uh, and so, I asked for payments of twenty-three, um, my feeling was, we would, I'd fall somewhere in the middle, um, but I, I originally offered forty-five, and it was countered a hundred, was what I was told. Um, and I said that we can do that, if there's payments that needs to happen now, I don't want this to come public, I mean, we've already set a pretty high bar, are we talking one hundred thousand or that? I mean, I don't understand, we, I mean, they're, they're, they're a law, I don't understand where the secret is in us, in this right now, that somebody's been in your head.
It, it, it's not a secret, what, what happened is they, they did make offers to move Santa Fe, for Santa Fe and our chance, we got to go offer, so that's how it changed us, and so, we go page, and that's in Santa Fe. Yeah, that's, I, I agree, that's, we gotta get that finalized, if you get something done before that, that will affect our negotiating, so.
I don't think you have anything wrong with Santa Fe.
We're no longer in control.
As a city, all I can do is control our discussion with, if we were having a conversation, but, the amount of purchase, everything else is kind of, oh, bad.
I have a silly question, um, why are you not paying, in the money that you're always sending that?
We can go that way if you want, so, since, since our emails and everything has changed, we have consulted our attorney, and, and I did share that with Mayor, um, it is our, our attorney's belief, um, and ours as well, that from the original page, we should have. It was our attorney's plea, and ours as well, that from the original page, we should have helped him. The, the original deed says to use in conjunction with tourist development, so it was deeded thirty days after the purchase of the track, and a joint purchase, and in Santa Fe, it's worth about a society. And the reason they have to be a joint purchase, because there's a sixty-day window of the federal government, where you can make an offer, a financial offer, to purchase tracks. At that time, Lauren Lutier had written a letter to the federal government, saying, please donate a hundred feet of track on the depot, instead of offering a payment. And he signed it, Secretary Santa Fe Railroad Historical Association, and that's where the ties. Now, Lauren is now a member, one of our members, no longer a member of that, but that attached Santa Fe Trail as an eligible buyer of that line. The only other company that contacted the federal government, granted that sixty-day window, was a company called Curl Capital out of Shawnee Mission, that wanted to rip the line up and sell it for scrap. And so, two years later, some Midland members, Midland had been, had spent about six years looking for a rail line to buy, and a lot of their members worked for Santa Fe, and they were told about this line, and it's still for sale. So they came in, and I have federal representation office, they came in and partnered with Santa Fe Trail, bought it, and then thirty days later, the deed to the park was deeded to Santa Fe Trail for one dollar. And it clearly says in there to be used in conjunction with the tourist railroad. Years later, the, the track was signed over to Midland, as it was all paid off, but the deed for the depot, or for the park, stayed with Santa Fe. Early on, they were taking all the, they were taking all the money from the store and half of all the tickets, and finally, Midland's like, this isn't fair, we can't afford to run. And that's when, but that was one of those joint, held in joint ownership. So when, when that stopped, they started paying rent, and you have to remember, there's only three people in Alice County that are members of Midland, or sixty-eight members, like three of them live in Alice County. So they, they don't have the strong tide of community, they were coming in from all over the place, because of the passion for the railroad. They didn't have the ties here to really complain about this, they were telling you to pay rent, you had to do it. Now, when I was hired, I started looking at all the deeds and everything, I was like, this isn't right. And so in twenty eighteen, I spoke with Glenn, and I spoke with Blake, and said, this is concerning to me, please review it, we didn't get about it. And the problem is, I was on council at the time, and it was just real sticky to deal with. So, now that I'm off council, we're dealing with this, so we withheld the rent, because we felt that never should have been rented to pay it. The deal was simple complaints, unlike criminal, the statute of limitation is up from when the degree of attack, is when you become aware of. So we became aware, as soon as we're aware, if we continue to pay, then we say it sounds wrong, it's okay, and we can no longer say it's not okay. So we withheld it, because we dispute the validity of any of it. So I understand that's a simple answer, we've already paid over three hundred thousand dollars over the last thirty years, that we feel that we shouldn't have paid, and we're still going to pay in, to, to acquire this land, even though we feel we shouldn't, out of goodwill. We just want this to go away, and we want to have good relationships, and it seems like there's always tension, we're always trying to do good things, but the truth is, if we pay them, we never have a claim ever again. And I, I think if Blake was here, he would probably confirm that. Was that logical?
Any other questions? First to you.
Can I tell you one more thing? So, our attorney did advise us that per the deed, if we would just shut down for two months, you guys would get the property back for free, because that's what the deed says. We haven't asked him any dashboards, we asked him just read the deed, it was his input, and he clearly put that right, I shared with Mayor. I'd rather not shut down for two months and then do this again, I'd rather, I'd rather have goodwill, and we, we do bring a lot of money, I'm comfortable supporting other organizations, if that's what it's done, but, but if we're, if it's going to take a long time, we might as well just shut it off for two months, and say, send it to somebody, and say, provide some money to just come back out this, when you guys have land. I mean, I, I'd much rather, much resolve and all of us, put in our review, like, you know. Mayor, are you really able to confirm that, you know, like, it's all an email?
Your email.
From our attorney. Is that what, is that what it said?
Can we clarify that one more time?
It's very simple language, it's, it, it's, it was a deed for one dollar, with restrictive coverage, restricting what the, what the park could be used for, had to be used for a public park, in conjunction with, in conjunction means as one, in a legal definition. So in conjunction with the tourist railroad, next door, next one, or adjacent. So, in a legal sense, the word conjunction in fractals, one, in fractals, one, how do you charge rent? There, there was never any right to charge rent. And the minute that it was stopped being used in conjunction with tourist railroad, there was a callback clause in there, from the city, that said, if it stops being used for this purpose, it reversed back to the city as if this deed never happened.
So there's an actual clause?
Absolutely, it's restrictive and clawback.
Nor, nor it has all that.
And it's a very simple, basic deed, it's, there, it's not tricky, it's one page, and, and there's really not much to it as far as interpretation. With that said, we're willing to pay. We'd appreciate not getting backed on for it, because we feel like we're being generous on that. And I know you guys might not feel the same way, but I don't even know if we give you, or maybe an organization, they want to pay for something that they probably could just shut down for two months and not pay. I mean, also, I forget that all this property is down here at Santa Fe Railroad in the first place for a dollar. So it's not like the city's ever spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to acquire this property, I know there's been money acquired over the years, and our community's spent a lot of lots of money, tears into it. But we do have value to it, and we're willing to pay for it.
My view is, we've got three entities here, I'd love to see all three be successful, like, whatever the measure of success is, I don't know if it's possible, I think we should continue to try to get down the path. But in the end, my, my responsibility is to say, that's what, if we can't, can't be of benefit to the city, and it's for the other two, then my responsibility is to show, to show it. So we just need to get to that, is there, go ahead, where all three can be?
There's a clean club, city attorney.
I'm not saying you're a quick one.
I'm not coming in, so. Glenn, he's looking at stuff.
Oh, yeah.
No, I, privately, I don't have a thought, so, unrelated to this matter, I think.
I guess to echo Susan, I have, let's, let's authorize a discussion, let's get to it.
Yeah, I, I think, I, there's too much value on both things, so both are valuable, so, and I think we owe them both the respect, so, beautiful, and let's get this going.
So, I didn't have the special, I didn't have the special, but I'm, I'm.
My travel schedule is really drastically dropped off.
After six o'clock.
Well, do we need a vote on, can I just, so?
Yeah, they just didn't get the authorization.
But I need counsel for that. Let's just, okay. Point, point is made, Glenn, to start discussion with minimum on property located over at.
I motion to be approved. Corey, I motion to approve.
Susan seconded. Or, hi, Susan.
Hi.
Brian, hi. Scott, all right.
Oh.
So one, you guys want to have a discussion. So new policy. AJ, what's your availability tomorrow?
I'm free right now. I mean, I'm free tomorrow, free whenever, I'm free tonight, I mean, I'll, this, we're shut down.
Those are open, well, committee meeting, or negotiating.
I'm telling you, it's going to take two months, I'm not going to, I'm just telling you, I'm not going to get this coming, unless you're, unless it's something crazy. Sorry, I'll be, I don't know.
Start the conversation, you know, this may be simpler than I think it is, obviously, it is, but I think we just got to get into the conversation, and it will, it will end as soon as it, I don't know if it is.
Okay.
Cool, we can have that, start that discussion tonight, and Blake, for fun, I'm going to, it's Blake, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the missing piece was, I know, I know, it's a discussion, but.
I don't think, I think my, I think he was.
You want to check with him and see if he has time? We got two walls back there, so, fifty cents is worth.
Dude, we dropped off, you see the stand we brought in? You see the stand we brought in, City Hall? I dropped off a big.
Standalone.
I'll charge for that.
Now, you got your back. All right. Come on, it's up. Yeah, the committee, you guys saw us. I meet tonight?
Yep.
Glenn, do you have time to meet tonight?
About what?
The mediation's still going on, yes.
You got to get back to that, though.
I'm fucking after you, just on there, you know, and so, I, I think.
Why don't, why don't, yeah, why don't you guys just, can you meet tonight with AJ, on your meeting? That's not considered open meeting, right?
It's just be, it's not. Got you.
Okay, so, AJ, if you got time, do you want, you guys want to meet here at City Hall, City Hall? City Hall.
City Hall.
Right after we, AJ, is that what? Okay, what's that, since we're not having an executive session tonight, I'll take a motion.
Is it a major?
Susan motions, Brian seconded, Orif.
Hi.
Susan.
Hi.
Brian. Scott. Julie.
I'm going to know you guys, you guys, never going to move seats.